Good evening. Today is August 21st, 2025, and this is the joint meeting of the Augusta Village Council and Ross Township Board. Just a couple housekeeping items. I just turned the air down, so hopefully we're all super comfortable. What I want individuals to do is if you want to move your space and sit next to someone else, feel free. We're all going to be sharing microphones, so if you have something to say, please pull the microphone over to you. We are live on YouTube, so we want to make sure every voice is heard tonight. I will be probably reminding certain people not to talk until I put the microphone in front of you, so don't be offended. I'm calling this meeting to order, and I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a note taker. Our clerk is taking notes, but certainly I see other recording devices. We welcome the recordings, so you have your own recorded message. We do have individuals at home that are watching live, and this video will also be posted on the Ross Township website for individuals to refer back to in the future. Clerk, you may proceed with the attendance.
Jeff Heffler. Terry, I'm, say your last name for me. Burdoff. Christina Thomas. Val Silkworth. Andy Ackler. John Thomas. Kim Carlton. Ann Daly. Jeff Rude is here. Rob Thall is present. Todd White. Michael Beeks. Diana Langshaw. Christina Hutchins. Sage is here. Amanda Wiersma. Lynn Harmon. Here.
Fantastic, thank you. I am seeking a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Can you use the microphone, please, sir?
Make a motion to accept the agenda, but removing the consent agenda items.
Second. Thank you. So we are going to strike consent agenda since I copy and pasted from Tuesday's agenda. I apologize for that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Motion with support to accept the agenda as presented with the removal of the consent agenda motion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Speaking now, we are heading into citizen comment. It is 6:02 PM. Individuals can approach the podium. The microphone is available. We will be giving three minutes for individuals to address both boards, and please speak up. The meeting is being recorded for YouTube. We would appreciate if we clearly state and spell your last name for the minutes. We do not need a street address. Comments are strictly limited to three minutes. Citizen comment is designed for one-way commentary to address the board. All citizens providing comments should address their remarks to the supervisor or board chair, who may respond to provide brief factual information. Board members will refrain from speaking during citizen comment. If citizens need specific assistance, please contact Ross Township during business hours for additional guidance or information. Who would like to lead us off? We have nobody approaching the podium. I'll be closing citizen comment at 6:03 PM. Moving into new business, the Ross Augusta Fire Department Intergovernmental Agreement. I will be turning it over to our auditor, Jeff Rude, who can lead us off with a dialogue, and please pull your microphone down so we can hear you, and you may proceed.
This, when I was here, I think it was not this past year, but the year before, while we were doing the audit, it came to my attention that there was an inter-local agreement, which I was never aware of in the first place, and the agreement was presented to me after some time, and while reading through the agreement, it brought up many questions for me. As far as the legally separate entity, how things are being run, makeup of the board, internal controls, how things are being processed, and it looks, the way it's supposed to be done is not exactly how it's being operated. So I think when you look at it, you know, everything should be separate in action function where you have a separate set of books for the entity, not just a fund within the township. And the way it's running right now, it's more like a, just like a, basically a fund of the township where you do have a board that makes motions or agreements or suggestions, and it still has to be approved by the township board because everything's running through their internal controls, through their cash accounts. Dual signatures, both the clerk and treasurer here, and everything is kind of like laying mostly on the township instead of this board that's supposed to be legally separate. Even like workers' comp. When you do a workers' comp, they're getting, you know, you know, everything that's running through here, you know, with the firefighters, it's going through the workers' comp. So it's like, where do you go from here? Do you re-strike the agreement to actually present like how it's working right now, or do you separate, make everything separate and have it read as their agreement as far as like funding and the asset makeup and everything else like that? So this is where I'm trying to figure out how best to present it, because right now it's not probably presenting how it should be. And that's where I'm standing from. Because you have a millage that is on Ross's L4029 to be levied against all the residents of the township, who are also part of the village. And within that, you look at like the taxable values of, with the respective parts, and is even the funding that is coming through tax revenue even reflective of what is in the agreement? Is it? Not really. So I think there just needs to be a little bit more understanding between how things are working in actuality compared to what is in paper. Okay?
Jeff, could I just ask a? A quick question. And?
Number, are you?
Six. And the question is, yeah, I think more for people that may be watching at home or watch this later. Why should, why should the village and the township, why is what you're saying, why does it matter to us? I mean, why does it?
Why does it matter to you? Because right now, you have a, you have an agreement that's supposed to be legally separated, and there's no, you know, as far as I know, there's no filing with the state of Michigan, no separate EIN number. You don't have a separate muni code for filing an audit with the state. You're supposed to have a separate audit. And right now, it is, you know, for as many years as I've been here, it's just been part of the township as part of the fund because they're collecting the revenue, and if it was really working how it should be, the township would be collecting money and cutting a check to this separate entity that has a separate set of books, and everything is separate from the township, right?
Is that how the original agreement is set up?
That's how it reads.
So if it reads that way, why aren't we doing that?
I don't know.
If it's reading that way, why aren't we doing that?
I don't know, because back in 1983, whoever designed this, it's, they didn't go the extra mile.
So basically?
We could stay with the original as long as we go and follow the rules of that original document.
Then you'd have to, then you'd have to separate everything up. You'd have to apply for an EIN number, and it just becomes a big show.
Well, let me jump in a little bit, too. So, you know, we were working on this agreement, trying to update it and bring it forward. A lot of issues came forward when Jeff reviewed it from an auditor's standpoint, from a CPA standpoint. Hey, this stuff is not how it's functioning, you know, because he's been doing the books for the township, and he was shocked really to see the agreement and what the things it called for in the agreement, because that didn't line up with anything of the way it was being operated. So it really took, so the township, you know, heard from our CPA and auditor. We took a look at where the agreement stood, made a lot of reconsiderations and thoughts, really, about the agreement in general. You know, even, you know, I've got from 1983, you know, some kind of document that was kind of the outline of this formation. And one of the things in it that I point out is that the expenses were to be shared by both municipalities. Seventy-five percent of the budget paid by Ross Township, twenty-five percent by the Village of Augusta. So that was one of the foundational ideas behind the authority, is that type of makeup. And that's in our agreement, too. Now, it says twenty-five percent is supposed to be paid by Augusta, seventy-five percent by Ross Township. But then, when we go into what we have now as a millage, so if we, you know, we do the millage calculations, and, you know, I went through and did the calculations myself, you know, based upon the township's taxable value, I removed out the village's taxable value because, so I don't want it counted twice, and came up with the percentage of the fire millage that's actually paid by the village itself. So you've got part of the fire millage being paid by village property owners and part of the fire millage paid by township property owners. And instead of twenty-five percent, what's being paid right now is approximately five percent by the village. So the village pays about five percent of the cost, township pays ninety-five percent of the cost for the fire department. If you break it down to numbers off of 2024, that works out to about $24,000 paid by the village for fire protection, and the township paid about $428,000 for fire protection. And, you know, when the township looks at that distinction of, you know, that they're paying for ninety-five percent of the fire service, and the village is paying for five, it doesn't mean the township is trying to stop what they're doing and not provide service to the village, but it makes the township think, hey, wait a minute. And that goes to the contract that we were looking at before. Should the percentages of representation be equal representation? When the township's paying ninety-five percent, village is paying five, why would we have an equal say in how the fire department is run? You know, is the fire authority still, or the fire board still the best way to do it? I mean, there's many other ways to do it. Other communities will do just a contract for services. So Ross Township would provide fire protection to the village at the millage rate. So it's not twenty-five percent as it is in the contract. It would be the five percent that the millage covers. And so you don't have anything extra come in. It's just the millage covers the fire protection, but it's done in a contract where it'd be the township's fire department providing fire services to the village. Many communities operate in that way, you know, so it's not unusual, especially when there's such a discrepancy between what is actually paid for by each of the communities. So that's really made the township take a step back and say, hey, what's right? You know, what should we be doing with this agreement? And that's where some of those changes came from my side of it, that I gave over to the village. And I think there's even further thought, maybe back on the township, as to what is the right way to do this? Should we be doing it just by contract and just let the millage pay for the service? And, you know, the village's share is five percent, not twenty-five percent. You know, so those are some of the things to think about, some of the things that we need to talk about, really, and talk about as a group, you know? Where do we go from this point? I don't think the village wants to pay twenty-five percent of the cost. I mean, that would be, you know, approximately five times what you're paying now, you know? So, you know, just some things that I think we need to think about and talk about.
He talked to the millage that was written, voted on, and what bearing to the current agreement that that language took into consideration, or was it nothing?
Nothing. So like the agreement, that's one of the problems with the agreement, is the agreement doesn't take into consideration the millage at all. The agreement just says twenty-five percent. We have a millage that we use to pay for the fire department, that both communities pay that millage in, but it's not, it's no longer seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent, and that's part of the issue.
Do we know when the millage first was put in? I mean, if this agreement goes back to eighty-three, or was, the millage doesn't go back that far, so at some point, was it getting paid as the seventy-five, twenty-five?
Doug may know when the millage went in. I don't know.
I'm pretty sure that the millage, when we purchased the ninety-four trucks, we had, we, well, I think at that time, what we did was we did a five, three, and one. So we did a five mil, three mil, one mil. We created enough money, we purchased two trucks. After we got enough money in there, we purchased two trucks. We didn't borrow anything. So I think it was like nineteen ninety or nineteen ninety-one, because we purchased the first truck and was a ninety-four, and then we purchased a ninety-six and ninety-seven. So I'm pretty sure that's about when it went into effect, so.
How long's the fire board been in effect?
The original agreement?
Since was ninety-four. Well, this agreement is ninety-four. I don't know if there was something prior.
Whatever I have was, it said something about eighty-three.
I have an outline of it from eighty-three. So I guess, I mean, this could be a contract. It doesn't, it's not signed by anybody. It's kind of an outline of, you know, it says from this date, ten, six, eighty-three, the fire departments will be merged and called the Augusta Ross Township Fire Department. The department will be administered by a fire board. This board will be made up of two representatives from Ross Township, two representatives from the Village of Augusta, two representatives from the fire department. There will be a chairman and a vice chairman. The chairman will be the seventh member of the board and will vote only in case of a tie. Meetings open to the public, four members constitute a quorum. The expenses will be shared by both municipalities. Seventy-five percent of the budget paid by Ross Township, twenty-five percent by the Village of Augusta. Yearly budget would be submitted by the fire board to the municipalities in January each year. After the first year, the amounts will be paid in April, July, October, and January. The financial records and accounting will be held by the treasurer of Ross Township, and a monthly balance sheet will be issued. All expenses will include payment of gasoline, oil, utilities, insurance, salaries, as well as other repairs and purchases of equipment and any other bills that might be incurred. The fire board will have all purchases except emergencies submitted to them in advance and will make any decisions on those expenditures. The chiefs of the department will be nominated by the department and final decision made by the fire board. So that's the extent of the agreement from ninety, or eighty-three. And then, at least the financial part was carried forward into the agreement in ninety-four, which is seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent.
But even with that?
Microphone.
Even with that document, it's not saying that it's legally separate.
No.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, at the podium.
So in nineteen eighty-three, we still had the Village of Augusta Fire Department and the Ross Township Fire Department. Eighty-seven, because Chris was the last, when his dad died, Chris was the last chief in the Village of Augusta. Then we combined, so everybody was just the Ross Augusta Fire Department or Augusta Ross Fire, whichever way it wants to be. So at any rate, I'm pretty sure nineteen eighty-seven is when it got combined for just one chief, and what we tried to do at that time was one chief, with a chief was from, like, Chris was the chief from, I'm trying to actually, I'd have to go back through here, who was chief and whatever, but, so at any rate, that's what we did was it, so in eighty-three, there was two separate departments. So we actually had, Village of Augusta had fifteen to sixteen guys on their fire department. Some of them were Ross Township firemen, eight or ten of them weren't. And then some of the Ross Township firemen were, I think the Ross Township firemen would run both, Augusta calls them, and Ross Township, but some of the village guys would only run one. So eighty-three still, it was two separate departments.
So then, Doug, so in eighty-seven, then it joined?
Yes.
Into one department?
Yeah, and that's when we, so we did one, made one chief, one assistant chief, so, and we tried to, we tried to balance it out. So one was from Augusta, one was from up here. Captains, one from down there, one from up here. Lieutenants were one from up here, one from down there. So we tried to keep a balance, so. And at that time, we had a lot more people from the village down there for personnel.
What do you have now as terms of village personnel?
For the village personnel, I've got about three right now, so unfortunately. For the village personnel, I've got about three right now, so unfortunately. I mean, I'm, there's a couple that are, that live on Augusta Drive, up by Stony Creek, so they're a little bit away, but, I mean, and then Rob is not too far, I mean, he goes either way, I mean, as far as.
How many township personnel are there then? I mean, it's all one?
Uh, I think there, as a, I think we're at eighteen, maybe, and I've got two new hires coming in, so we'll, might, should be at twenty, so, but, so. So we're still, still pushing for more Augusta people, so.
Jeff, you had mentioned that you just became aware last year, and now that you, you have auditing perspective, if they, if the groups decide not to change anything, does that create findings that you have to report to the state?
Well, it creates kind of confusion and what's being reported, because, I mean, technically, all these are revenues and expenses, you know, the revenue is still going to be reported on the township because it's their tax millage, okay? But then you'd have a distribution going to, supposed to have a distribution probably going to the fire department. So, well, that's a lot. So like in other communities that we have, like, you know, the same kind of agreement where you do have a joint venture between two entities, both of them, one may have tax levy or special assessment, and the other one may just be paying it through their operating, and they find a budget, they find the, the proportionate share that both of them are supposed to chip in based on taxable value, population, and historical runs, and then you divide that budget amongst the two units, that's just one way, or by a millage rate, and then they both chip in, and whether it's coming from their operating front or a millage, that's how they both pay for it, okay? And then the actual activity is then recorded within that separate entity for revenues, expenses, contributions, everything else.
And you talked, I, I thought I heard, but I'm not positive if, if I got the right count, you know, the right interpretation, but because it's, you know, Rob shared ninety-five, five, and gave the numbers behind it, and, you know, I'll assume they're pretty close, right? You had mentioned representation, like, right now we have two members that are appointed by the board of Ross Township, two members probably appointed by the Village of Augusta, and then we have a member at large. And you had mentioned that representation should take more into account the contributions, right?
I mean, yes and no. It really depends on the initial agreement. Now, with everything being here, yeah, probably that should probably reflect that, but once you get into a joint venture where you may have two, or another person may come in, another person come in, another entity, you know, each one of them are going to have, want representation within that. So it's, it's kind of like a live thing because every unit wants their voice heard, okay? So whether it's based on how much you're contributing or population, or if you're just saying, hey, we're both getting together, it's, you know, it's not my decision, it's what's written down, or how you guys figure how to, to go about it. I can't tell you one way or the other. I can tell you how it's done in multiple other locations.
But you can tell us how it's done where we don't have findings going to the state?
Yeah, well, what we need to figure out is what we're going to do going forward. Are we creating a separate entity? Or are we just saying it's in our local agreement for contract for services, then everything stays here? Or, you know, you have neighbors just like right down the road, they have the same, same thing, where at one point, Richland Village and the township, they didn't have a millage, so annually they would send a bill to the village for their share of fire protection. They passed a millage, that went away, and they're paying everything but the millage. If the millage disappears, they'll probably go back to the, whatever ratio they had, and they'll bill them annually for a share of the cost.
You're saying Richland Township and Richland Village are doing it like the service agreement, but they're letting the millage pay for it, yet, so the village pays?
The village and its township provides, kind of like.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's similar to that, but it's like, is that, do they have, do they have a hidden agreement? You know, something that's dating back to, you know, nineteen eighty or ninety?
I think a couple, at least one thing to get on the table to make sure we, we all agree on, is that there, there is, how the fire department operates today, not, not from the fire board, not the village or the township, but the actual execution of it, there's, there's no discussion to change that. It's, it's a matter of what is the right administrative function behind to, to support it? If I said that correctly? I mean, is there anybody who just?
That is, that is my understanding. We all want fire service.
Right.
We're all entitled to fire service.
Right.
I think it's the logistics that we need to work out.
Yep. So, so I just think it's important that, that anyone listening or here that we're all in agreement, we're not looking to change that, we're not looking to change how the village gets fire protection or how the township does, it's just behind the scenes. And so if I, if I heard correctly, I, I hear three options. The, what Christina brought up, which is often referred to as the null option or the current one, there's the rework the agreement, or go to the service agreement style. And the, the first one, the current, appears to not be a viable option because of how it's structured with the, the twenty-five, seventy-five, I mean, it's got to be changed, you know, some of it. And so then it's a matter of, okay, do you change, I guess there's four, there's, you rewrite it to what we do, or you go to the service. So, I mean, I think that that's what's, you know, kind of what's the interest from both parties or the village, it's like, you're like, hey, you know what, I kind of like that service agreement, you guys just deal with it, millage goes, work out an agreement, or no, 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 we, we want, we want an agreement, and so now we got, just hash that out.
Mike, true.
The other part of this that hasn't been discussed is how much service is being provided to the village as to the township. Obviously, the township's much larger, we're one square mile roughly, and, you know, is that the amount that's being paid adequate to cover the amount of service? I mean, we receive, we've been getting regular reports now from the fire department that, you know, how many calls for service in the village, and how many calls are in the township? And that appears to be probably closer to the five percent that Counselor Thaw has brought up, so is that being adequate? And you bring up Richland Village, Richland Township, at the most, I think theirs was ten percent, if I recall correctly, of service to, in the village, and how much they were paying was about ten percent of what they paid to the township at the, at one point in time. I can say that because I was the village president at one point in time there in Richland, so I imagine those numbers may have changed slightly, I'm on the fire department in Richland, so, and our calls for service in the village range around that number, I think, so I think that should be a piece of this puzzle that we're working on, and I appreciate everybody's interest in trying to make this a fair and equitable operation for both the village and the township out here in Ross and Augusta. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our auditor has that information, we, that is something that we provided to him, and he can actually walk through that.
I did, I was forwarded some information from, I'm just going to wing it, because I pretty much have the numbers in my head pretty close. There is a portion that, you know, if you take the last four years, I took the amount of runs that were within the township, within the village, and then also mutual aid. The village, you're going to get the village, township's going to cover mutual aid, okay? From the standpoint, it was roughly about thirteen percent, okay, over the last four years averaged. So thirteen percent of the activity, or the runs or calls, were within the village limits, okay? So that's, you know, if you look at, you know, okay, the five percent, twenty-five percent, yeah, one's low, one's high, you, you know, you have to find the happy medium, and you, you know, you're still going to get service, you know, nobody's denying that, it's just what's it going to look like?
Oh, I was going to ask Mr. Hepler, experience and exposure, what would a, what would a service agreement look like that would be satisfactory? I mean, is it, is it a statement that all calls will respond, will be responded to? Is it, is there another measurement to be used? I mean, is there quality metrics? Is there, you know, if, if our fire department can't handle it, that we guarantee, you know, mutual aid from, you know, other partners? I'm, I'm just trying to get an idea of what would that look like in a, in a service agreement, so that, so that everybody can be satisfied that we are, you know, we would move forward in that manner and still give you the service that you have today?
I'm just the village manager and a police chief, okay? But I, I would look at, any kind of agreement would be a mutually agreed upon service contract that, because Ross Augusta has to call for mutual aid now. They, and so does Richland, so does Galesburg. There is no department out here that's sitting fat and happy, I'll be very honest. It's hard to find firemen, it's hard to find policemen, we're all struggling to bring on quality people that want to put in the time, and we're very blessed that we have some very good Ross Augusta firemen. Some of them are Richland firemen, some of them have worked, I've worked on multiple departments because their training, the amount of time it takes is a huge burden on folks today. They are forced due to numerous state and local requirements to put in a great deal of time and effort in training, and it's hard when you're, you have a family, and you have life, and you have a real job. As the sheriff likes to say, my day job is being a police chief, my night job is doing firemen and running, running multiple businesses, so I think, looking at it, to provide good fire service, an agreement and, you know, would, would mirror that, okay, there's a millage that's supporting it. You have four hundred and forty thousand, if I recall correctly, something in that that comes from your millage. You divide that out, about half of it goes to operations, your, your firemen and your normal service, and the other half is for capital improvements, which is what it should be. At some point in time, this station here is going to need service, and that millage should cover that, the same as it does for the one in, in Augusta. Capital improvements are, are an expense. The village does not charge anybody any rent or anything else, we're happy to provide, we just put a new roof on the building thanks to a generous donation from our largest industry here in, in this township and village. Nappan Milling provided $10,000, and a couple of residents kicked in about $600 to help offset that cost, and the village is picking up the rest of it at this point in time. Doug had asked, I'm sorry, chief had asked for some doors on the fire station, I think that's something that can get budgeted in down the road, but my mind is, is that your agreement doesn't really cover capital improvements. And it should be picked up, in my mind, by this fire millage, it's, that shouldn't be a question. Eventually, this one's going to need capital improvements. You're going to need to fix a roof, you're going to need to fix a heater or, or something, that's capital improvement. And doing budgets and working at the county level, we're constantly having to deal with the issue of capital improvements and, and making things work, and that's part of your expense, and plain and simple, it's not that hard.
So as part of the service agreement format, we would kind of say, part of that is going to be, whatever our capital expenditures are going to be, at least an X percent is going to be allocated to, you know, repair and maintenance of buildings, and it would include equipment that's housed and, and building that's, that's housed down in Augusta.
And here?
As part of, and here, right.
I, I wouldn't exclude you, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, that let's be fair.
Yeah.
Fair and equitable.
And like I said.
That millage shit comes from both, both entities, you know, should cover those expenses, and I kind of agree with your auditor, it probably should be a separate set of books and just run it as a separate entity within the governmental bodies, and you have representatives from both entities that sit on that board, and to me, that makes a whole lot of sense, and it's very, I think that's the best way to run this thing, and just say, hey, okay, this is what we're doing, and we work with our firemen and we work with the two boards, and let's, let's make it work.
I, and I think we're kind of migrating to that idea, right? I mean, as far as, from what I've heard on the options, you know, a service agreement?
He's talking about.
He's talking about making it a separate entity.
Oh, I was talking about making it a service agreement. What kind of, what kind of factors do we need in place to make sure everybody's comfortable? We know, you know, obviously, ma, you know, making the calls correctly, I mean, you know, on time, whether it's mutual aid or, or the fire department, and then we also, the capital parts of it.
I think that's a decision that we would have to, we'd have to make, so I don't, you know, with two bodies, you know, what would be the, do the, the approach?
I think.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Phil, did you want to?
Phil?
I, I did want to make, I, I don't know which one of these actions will not choose as a common thing that I don't want to see this oversight of, and it's selfish on my part, but we have worked very hard over the last year, year and a half to put together a fire board that actually is looking at the needs of the communities and the needs of the fire departments and.
Sorry, accountability, and making sure that we're all doing what we need to do, and I want to see us continue to have that kind of oversight, and I think it makes sense, irregardless of which one of these we go with.
I had a question. As a contract, though, we wouldn't have that entity, right? It would be run by Ross Township, the whole thing.
Correct. If you had a service agreement, the terms of the agreement would be, would set the parameters, and so, yeah, it would be basically a service contract, a lot of, you know, and, and, you know, we've put these together a number of times, we just did a service agreement between Pavilion Township and Brady Township. They came out of an authority, Brady did, and joined, well, didn't join, but they then contracted for service from Brady Township for fire service. You know, a lot of times the biggest issue and the hardest issue to figure out in those types of agreements is not necessarily the service, because you're going to provide them the same service that you provide to yourself. I mean, it's the same service that they get now, but it's the dollars that, you know, what does it cost? But in your circumstance, you know, you have a millage in place, and so the millage seems to be able to cover the, those expenses, you know, at a ninety-five, five percent split, which seems to maybe be the appropriate number. I don't know that that's the difficult issue, which is normally the difficult issue in the service agreement is how much do you charge the other party for the service? You, if you have a millage that is being collected by both, you know, in both entities, it makes it kind of simple from that standpoint, that it's not that, you're not arguing over the dollars so much, and the, the service is the service. You're going to continue to provide an Augusta or a Ross Augusta fire service to both communities, whether it's by, you know, whether you do a separate agreement, a service agreement, it's going to, the thing that you won't have or wouldn't have is a separate body to, you know, a fire board that's going to run the department. You know, you can have an advisory committee, you could do other things, but that separate entity wouldn't exist. So that's really the difference between the two, is you're going to. So that's really the difference between the two, is you're gonna have either a separate entity set up that has to run as a separate entity, or, you know, it's a service agreement. And you could have an advisory committee set up, but it would still be a service agreement run by the township, providing service to the village.
I think what, what Val speaks to is extremely valuable. Um, I've enjoyed getting to know you, Val, and seeing you here. And I know that the fire board is very dedicated to results, but I, I do have concerns as it relates to when the fire department guys come to me and they do express, you know, who's my boss? I have a full-time job, I am being put through the wringer to drive results and get information. And it's either my family or it's this job. And so, I, I love the committee idea, and I would like to hang on to the committee idea. But I tend to agree with our auditor in that the way it's already set up is the way it should be governed. But I, I would love to have the committees that can work with the fire department. But I, I do hear from firefighters, and they, they are pulled in a lot of directions that's not, are meat and potatoes. And it's going on the rescues and fighting the fires. And to, to the point of having a committee to help with the quality metrics, I would like to see the board manage the fire department and not have a fire board. And I don't wanna offend you, and I don't wanna offend you. Um, but I, 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 I do have to listen to our firefighters when they come in and counsel with me, and I do, I don't wanna lose them.
So, but you, so you're not gonna hold them at the same standard, the Ross, if you run the fire department?
What do you mean?
Well, it sounds like to me that the board is being tough on the firemen, and they come in and complain to you. So then you wanna take them under your wing and get rid of the fire board?
I never said that.
Well, that, that's how it sounds to me, that's my interpretation.
That's your interpretation, and that's fair. I also said I think it's valid that the quality metrics are very important.
They are.
Um, and I don't discount that. I do have to listen, I'm the supervisor of the township, I do have to listen to the firefighters. I have to listen to our command staff, I have to listen to, um, everybody, and that includes you, it includes people from the village. What I want is something that works. And what I, I fear is that the extra layer of the fire board isn't working as efficiently as maybe it could be or should be. That's not against anybody, but when you have volunteer firefighters that work forty and fifty hours a week in another township or another county, how much more can we stress upon them that we want you to go out and get this quote? We want you to bring us these metrics, and then you have to bring it to the fire board. And then, by the way, you've gotta get it past this board as well. So it's not an issue of coddling or taking anybody under my wing. It's an issue of, I think we need to really, really figure out how we're gonna maintain this precious resource, that's our firefighters. And, and are we going to look at collapsing a board but maintaining a committee? And what does that committee look like to help push the work over to meet the state standards? That's where I'm coming from.
You know, and, and that's fair, but, uh, I just feel that, you know, the fire board puts in a lot of work and effort into that same kind of thing, but I understand that it's like a two-step process. Maybe that's something that could be flattened.
Val?
Yeah, um, just a thought process, the brain's work and overtime over here. Um, we just, in the last couple of months, have put together some committees.
Under the wing of the fire board, who will? And so if we dissolve the fire
Fire board, are we going to still continue with those committees that we have?
I love your committees.
And work through that because that would flatten it out, as Chris said, but it will also maintain the continuity of the work that we've done on the fire board with the fire guys and the command staff, if everybody's agreeable to that. I don't know, just throwing it out there.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, if the committees have been formed and they're already working with the fire department, I guess they could just report to the board and, you know, help us do what they've been trying to do already. Um, or we, we just do one committee that helps the, the fire department and in all those different areas. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the committees look like right now that you guys have set up, we haven't seen that.
Well, we haven't really either, we've just begun the conversation and said, okay, this group is gonna do this, this one's gonna do this, this one's gonna do that. So it, we really haven't kicked anything off yet. But the way it's kinda morphed out in my eyes is we've got the accountability, we've got the eyes on the metrics. And I'm gonna say something, and I, please don't take this the wrong way, but that inter-local fire agreement that's been out there forever and ever, to me, it was a document, I don't know that it was necessarily followed in the way it maybe should have been followed. I think that might be part of the issue. And there's been some, some thought that, um, maybe we didn't report out the way we should have reported some things. Um, and I know that's a vague statement, but I don't, if I say anything else, I'm gonna look like I'm throwing people under the bus. That's not my intent here. But I want to, I envisioned that the committees that we were putting together were to help the command staff do what we were asking them to do. And I don't wanna take that away from them either. That's all I got.
I've got a couple of things here. Iterations over the, um, various iterations over time on this agreement.
Put your mic closer to you, thank you, sir.
How's that?
I love it, what number are you? One, thank you.
Always.
Was there a reason for that?
Just someone's yelling at you to put your mic up.
Okay, various iterations, um, I've interpreted that the millage is what the millage is. And any, the seventy-five, twenty-five split, my interpretation came in that that would be any monies needed over and above what the millages had provided for. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that, that, that was my understanding. Um, looking at, from what Trustee Beeks had said, you know, would the village go through any mutual aid? If we were to look at what Attorney Thal had proposed here, that we would turn over the millage monies that are collected from the village and go with Ross Township, they would be our fire service. I think it would fall on Ross Township or the fire department to set up any mutual aid outside of us contacting different departments. Uh, that, that's just my feel as to how it would work, since we theoretically would not have a fire department to, um, respond back in a mutual aid agreement.
Correct, is it not?
Yeah, that's
So we would, we would be setting up
If, if this all warfs into a service contract, our board would be setting up
Mutual aid contracts?
You would have mutual aid, um
I mean, along with the fire department's help.
Correct, I was looking for Doug to jump up and get on that.
We've already got
Microphone, microphone.
We've already got mutual aids. Contracts with the VA to cover the village to, to assist us, because since how they're a manned station, there's a lot of times that they're gonna beat us to our call, I mean, or at the same time. So we already have a mutual aid contract or automatic aid with the VA fire department for the village. Um, we have, I have Galesburg as the automatic aid for structured fires in, in the village. Um, just like I've got Richland and Hickory Corners for automatic aid for any of the calls here, Bedford at that end. I mean, so we try to cover everybody for automatic aid anymore, it's not mutual aid, it's automatic aid. So we have them in the run cars that if it's a structured fire, we get called, Richland get called, whoever gets called all at the same time. So like for the village, the VA gets called the same, right? When we get called, the VA gets called, I make sure that they get called, that they did get called too, but, uh
Is that, is that a signed agreement, or is that just, hey?
Uh, it is, it's a signed agreement with the VA, because since how it's a federal, it's different. Otherwise, the other ones are, with the run cards we have set up, everybody in Council County, everybody in pretty much the, everywhere has these run cards set up to, because of, like Jeff said, is the lack of having enough firemen for any place, so.
So Doug, what we hear from you, I apologize Attorney Thal, is that the, we wouldn't be setting up anything, you come ready-made with all of the
Pretty much everything
And so it would just be built into the contract.
All that right now, I mean, there's nothing to be set up, it's, it, back in the day, it was. Back in the day, we used to have, I had, we had, uh, mutual aid agreements with the city of Battle Creek for the Fort Custer area. Um, that was before the VA really got going. Um, so we did have written mutual aid agreements that were written and signed by us, the township, and then the Battle Creek and the fire department from over there.
Thank you, chief.
So, one thing here, so when you're talking about the, maybe the township taking back over, when, the reason we did the fire board is because it's kinda what, what's happening right now, is there's too much between the township and the village and not getting anywhere. So that's why the, both entities decided to put the fire, fire board together. And, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's worked best. Because back in the day, so back in the day, when it was the Village of Augusta Fire Department, Ross Township Fire Department, what the village did was, it was a seventy-five, twenty-five. There was a lot of times we played heck trying to get the twenty-five if we needed twenty-five percent from the village, because their tax base is, at that time, I mean, it's still, is a lot less than what it is for, for the lake residents. So I mean, the money wasn't, is available, that's why, uh, and that's also why we went to the fire millage.
Right, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't go back the way it was pre-eighty-three, where you had, you had two departments, there's still one department, uh, basically answerable to, to one entity, still one millage, there's some details that would have to be worked out. So, you know, if it came to a, you know, capital improvement, I mean, my assumption would be, at that point, you know, the, the township would own any capital improvements, uh, unless we wrote, unless we build it all into the, you know, the millage.
So a lot of times what you have in a service agreement is you would lease, so if you wanna maintain the fire station in Augusta, you would basically have a lease of that facility under the service agreement. And the agreement would provide how you're gonna fund improvements to that facility. Uh, the other, you wouldn't have to have any type of agreement with regard to the fire station here, because it's just under your management. So it's something that you can take care of in an agreement. I mean, we try to take care of it in our, uh, uh, fire board agreement, you know, how to handle the different properties. But, uh, you know, in, in that case, it tries to handle both this fire station and their fire station. Gets a little bit harder with this, because it's part of our building itself. Um, so it's a little harder to have a fire board that might be in charge of our own structure and building.
And is it fair to say that today, we're kind of operating a little bit in both, both worlds? So financially, we're operating more under the service agreement, because everything flows through us from the, the, the management of, by having the fire board, that's more like the, the intergovernmental agreement. So we're, so we're kind of got one foot in each world, and it's trying to get, we need to get both feet in the same world.
And the fire board has been trying to put more forward in how it operates. But it's really been operated previously more like a service agreement, with the fire board not doing as much. They are trying to do a lot more now, I think, in trying to improve how it operates.
And I think, I know I'd like to hear from the, from the, the village council, since we spent a lot of time talking about the service agreement, what, what concerns do you have about that approach? What would you like to see, if, if that ends up being the direction, you know, what kind of things do you think need to be, you know, built into that to make you comfortable?
I'll start out, with the agreement that came through in February, you know, we, probably no misunderstanding about it. We were not happy with, with the agreement as presented, as written. I think we've gotten a little bit more, or quite a bit more information tonight than what we have had. Um, a couple of things, though, stand out. Uh, the, uh, all along previous iterations called for rental of the South Station in Augusta. All of a sudden, we get to this one in February, and the mention of rental, you know, albeit one dollar a year, has just wiped off the face of the map. There's nothing in there to provide for that. The capital, um, capital expenses, improvements, maintenance improvements, whatever, I think that was all wiped off, and that was pushed back to being at the responsibility, South Station for Augusta, North Station for Ross Township. Uh, let's go back to July of last year, when we had our first joint meeting. And, you know, it was brought up that with the one dollar a year rental, there was no way that we were going to be able to collect enough monies for the fifteen thousand dollar roof. Fortunately, we had one donor step up and made it very possible for us. But that aside, you know, it, it was not gonna happen. And then when you take that dollar away from us, it definitely won't happen. So I, I think what, what I would still like is for the Ross Township board members to go through and state for themselves why the changes were made that we did see in this February copy. We've got it from Attorney Thal, I'd, I'd like to hear each of the members present, you know, back up their justification for why was the rental taken out of the picture.
Let me just address the section from the contract, so everybody knows what we're talking about. Um, so this is the revised version, and it says the village shall, and so it did take out the one dollar rent, which is
On page?
Page eleven, I mean, the one dollar rent is basically just a token consideration to, uh, doesn't really do anything. Uh, the, the village shall allow the South Station to be used by the fire department throughout the duration of this agreement. The fire board shall be responsible, so the fire board's responsible for normal repairs, maintenance, and utility services to the South Station. Said normal repairs and maintenance to the facilities shall be proposed by the fire board and subject to final approval of the village, because it is a village building. Uh, any bids that, any bids that must be obtained for repairs and maintenance of the South Station facility shall be obtained by the village pursuant to its purchasing policy. The village shall provide proof of insurance for South Station and provide proof annually of the, uh, to the fire board for review. Capital improvements are the responsibility of the village. So normal repairs and maintenance, uh, and utilities paid by the fire board, capital improvements paid by the village. And that, and we did this exact same provision for that station as for our station.
I, I misread, I misread that, sorry about that. But, um, one other point, um
John, does that, does that alleviate your concern around
Yeah, it, yeah, I, I had misread the capital.
That's fine, and I think, you know, my memory was that there was a lot of angst in the process, you know, requiring, you know, bids on the roof, and it was like, hey, we, we felt like you take care of your building. You, you follow your policies, your purchasing policies, and, and, and so, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
But, um, going back to what Attorney Thal had stated earlier, you know, since the township does own the building here, I, in my eyes, I think it would be of benefit. You know, it might be more cost to process the payments and whatever. But, um, you know, if you sequester the footprint size of the fire barn, you know, it takes up four bays, let's say, for sake of argument, it's sixty-six percent of that building. I think it would be a benefit to the township, to anyone looking to get a quick idea of what costs are to run the fire board. You know, you're running lights out there, you're running electricity, you open and shut the doors, you run lights, you run, um, HVAC. So I, I think an assigned portion of the electricity, natural gas, if that's what they run on, whatever, would be of benefit to seeing what the actual costs are to run, to run the fire department.
Actually, if I can address that, I've already started doing that. As soon as I became clerk, I took, I actually did a whole thing of our building, found out how much each percentage was each percentage was the fire department, the police department, and the village, I mean, the township offices. And that's been broken down. And since I've been here, that has been divided up amongst the different entities.
You're saying that the, you're saying the fire portion is being paid by the millage?
Right.
Yes, okay.
He's talking about, you're talking about down the village, right?
No, 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 no.
You're talking here.
I'm talking out here.
Okay.
I thought Attorney Thau said, you know, since it is township property, why do we need to go to that step and have the bills paid out? I, I just think it would give a clearer rundown of the operating costs associated with the fire department. You know, if you have its own budget separate, or ID'd by the fire department, separate from whatever is in here, and you have to go through each time and assign a percent to.
Well, it's a, the actual fire department is a different fund in our budget. And so, when bills come through, I charge the percentage that we have, the board had agreed on to the, the, the millage. And so, we, we are capturing the cost of exactly how much it costs to run the fire department.
Okay. Back to the question of, somebody asked about what our concerns were for the, you know, about an agreement or this one here. My concern about the agreement is that we, the Village of Augusta, would lose our involvement in decisions that are made, besides coming up here and giving our three-minute or one-minute-
Spiel.
Spiel. So, that's, that's my concern.
That's also my concern.
It seems to me as though that decision is kind of made by how much money Ross Township pays out as to how much money Augusta pays out. So, you get three people on the board, we get two. Our people are not getting equal representation that you are. And our people, I think, our people are just as important as yours, regardless of how much money is paid out.
Kim, did you want to say something?
That was what I was going to say.
I got a lot to say, but I'm going to limit myself to the fact that we don't want to see us lose the involvement, because that will upset the residents, and we don't want to lose our fire station.
That's the other thing. We're concerned that we'll lose our fire station, that that will be, you know-
Close down.
Close down. And, you know, we've already lost the voting. We still hear that a lot. So, we really don't want to add to the, the fray of our citizens.
Jeff, if we go to the service agreement format, and it's run by the Ross Township Board, and they elect committees, it's not a problem having a couple of people on the-
On the committee? No, because a lot, a lot of townships will have, let's say, a perks board, okay? Is a legal, is the parks a separate legal entity? No. It's just made up of people in the community that want to represent the parks and have like a plan to, kind of like, plan their activities and, and kind of give a direction of what they want to do. I don't think it'd be any different than having a committee for the fire. I think it's a great, great idea, because you get people from both communities that want to get together and make the best thing possible for its residents.
Right. So, that would just be a minimum-type rule that we can go into that type of a arrangement with. And Rob already talked about a service agreement and a lease agreement. And I think that would alleviate fear that, that the fire department would be shut down. So, again, we would have, you know, I look at it just as, not, I don't know if caveat is the right word, but portions of it, addendums, or however you structure the agreement, that, you know, the service agreement on the, on the hall, how many people are eligible to participate in, however the board wants to set up their, the committee to report to them. But, there was one thing that, John, you had said that I'd like to have clarification on. John was under the impression that the twenty-five, seventy-five in the agreement is only for monies that are needed beyond the collections of the millage. Is that an accurate thought, or is that not an accurate thought? I mean, he said, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't hear anybody address that. And I, it's the first I've heard of it, so I just want to know for myself as well.
So, in the agreement, it says, "The annual approved budget for operations, maintenance, and capital expenditures of the fire department shall be supported by contributions from the village and township in the following shares. One quarter from the village, three quarter from the township, payable quarterly at other appropriate times pursuant to their budget cycles and fund availability." So, I mean, that's not what it says. But, and I would say that, you know, many communities do different things. So, a lot of times, you know, one community may have a millage. Now, because it's a village, when we pass a millage, that's also a millage in the village. And so, you know, we feel fair is fair. You know, they're paying that portion to the fire department, and so, we treat that as their share, you know, of it. But, you know, many times, it's one party might just pay out of their general fund. Another party might do a millage. One party may do a special assessment. It doesn't matter how they come up with the funds, they just come up with the funds, you know, the split of whatever you agree to. In our case, you know, we've been doing the, the millage, and it's worked fine, but it's not compliant with what the contract says.
Right. I mean, we have a, a millage out there. Yes, everybody's assessed the same based on taxable value, and it's a ninety-five, five. It doesn't state that at all in the current agreement. But, in the, in a service agreement-type arena, it doesn't matter then, right? Because the, the exposure is fact that we're going to supply for the amount collected from the village, you know, constituents. That will cover the mutual aid, the repairs of the, you know, of the trucks. It would be the service agreement on the, on the building. It would include, you know, having representation from the village on the committee, so that when decisions are made, it would go set. So, that all kind of sets itself up for fitting right into that type of an arrangement then, right?
Yeah, it does. And, you know, and I understand that everybody wants representation, you know, say, you know, our people want representation, township wants representation. But, really, when the rubber hits the road, it does come down to like financial contribution. I mean, when you want to have a, you know, who has say over how ninety-five percent of that money's spent versus five percent of the money's spent? Should the five percent of the, the people tell you how you should spend ninety-five percent of the funds? I mean, those things go into, yeah, everybody wants to be represented, and they should be represented. If you do go with a, a commit, if you do go with the interlocal fire board, it, it almost has to change. When you look, you know, maybe it was acceptable seventy-five, but when you're looking at ninety-five percent of the cost being paid by township residents, five by the village, yeah, the village still has representation, even under what, you know, we proposed at the three-to-two, you know, numbers. The village still had two people on there to provide representation. It doesn't carry the day, but five percent doesn't carry the day. You know, fifty percent is fifty percent, and you both get equals. I mean, there's a big difference between fifty-fifty and ninety-five-five.
I understand that. And I just want to clarify that under an arrangement where there's a service agreement, the committee is only going to make recommendations to the Ross Township Board, and they have the seven votes.
Right. But, they can lock in, but the agreement can lock in, the service agreement can lock in things that are of concern, you know, that you're not closing down the-
Right, right.
-south station.
Right.
You know, that, you know, that the, the level of service doesn't go down. You're providing the same level of service. That these committees are established in the service agreement as standing committees, or, or standing committee that could have subcommittees, you know, if they have a personnel committee, a capital improvement committee, operations committee. All those could be subcommittees of a, of a committee that's established to help, you know, in all cases, you know, it's, you need that, something like that to provide the information and the metrics to take action on. You're always going to need some kind of support in that manner. You know, it'd be daunting for the board to just say, okay, we're going to operate the fire department. Your meetings are going to go, how long? You know, you try to limit them to two hours, but now you're going to have to manage every aspect of the fire department. You need a committee, if you go that route, you would need a committee to assist you and provide you the guidance.
And a service agreement, that-
Lock all those things in.
That, that could be all established. Right.
Yeah, a service agreement would be a mutual-
I'm sorry.
It would be a mutual agreement, just like any other agreement between the parties. You know, we put out draft terms, and we negotiate and come up with an agreement that everybody's happy with.
One thing, just make sure that you include in the agreement, if the millage ceased to exist, what the funding would look like. Okay? Because if the millage goes away-
It's money.
Yeah. So, whether or not you do it based on some kind of formula, where you look at population, you know, runs, you know, taxable value, and do a ratio based on that, whether it's a third, a third, a third, and then you have a percentage. But, something needs to be probably locked in stone within the agreement. If the millage ever goes away, how is it going to keep on running?
You're assuming it's going to keep on running, though, in that-
Keep on running. It can't, it can't go away.
We have to provide fire service. We have to provide fire service.
I, I would-
Is that village dependent? If you don't have money, how are you going to do it? Microphone.
Actually, most important thing that you, as a body, do, both bodies, is you pass a millage, or you pass funding for departments. Thus, your public safety is what we call the most critical incident, or, and then your infrastructure is your, probably your second. But, that's your job to provide that. Now, it's up to you how you manage it and make it function. The village has gone to a village manager position to help do the day-to-day operations. They give me a budget. I manage how we fund all of the departments. Our biggest is our DPW, really. They say that fire and police are the biggest. No, DPW is our biggest. We were, we run a water and sewer operation, which actually provides water for the fire operations. Whenever they need water, they have to come to the village, or they have to suck it out of Galt Lake. One way or another, they need water. Or, they go to Richland and get it from there. But, and then your streets and roads are part of that infrastructure, part of that equation. So, in essence, as your corporate counsel has, has said, and your auditor is saying, you would set up and then manage or have a committee to manage the operations of a fire service in this case. So, we look at this as, as, you know, how do you manage it? You actually want your departments to, your, your chief, fire chief, your police chief, to, to provide you input as to what's going on with their department. At the end of the day, the village not only provides the fire millage, but they also provide a millage to you that you receive from the village funding beyond the fire millage. So, you're getting two, two buckets of money from the village. One to operate your township and the other to operate your fire department. So, keep that in mind, that there is two, two buckets of money coming from the village.
So, if, if the millage didn't pass, and we didn't do anything, we collapsed it, the, the insurance rates would skyrocket. So, the, but there is a, correct me if I'm wrong, should the millage not pass, and, and it's one reason we always give it plenty of time. So, if we have, have to go back a second time and, and ask for it, there is the, an assessment that could be applied. So, I mean, there, there is, there is a alternative option. I, you know, I think if you look at things that we'd want to work into, to an agreement, would be that both bodies agree to not only support the millage, but kind of, you know, it's that time for election, kind of, you know, actively help support it. So, we're out there with it. But, if, if, there are some, if we were to go with the intergovernmental agreement, I heard you say, there's some things we have to go get. You know, we have to, we have to go get a, there, you gave out a number. You said, or you gave out a acronym or letter.
IIN number.
IIN? IIN. We'd have to go, we'd have to go get, and so, there's some things, EIN.
EIN number.
It'd be a separate company, like literally a separate company. And then, what would then happen is then that company would actually have to lease that, that structure and your structure. Not for a dollar either.
Mercure.
Not mercure. Can, but, you know, it has to be something like five hundred bucks, you know, five hundred bucks a month, whatever, whatever is agreed upon. But, then, yes, you're, you're paying for everything. You're paying for insurance, water. Now, you're going to have a separate audit. You're going to have to have a separate attorney. I mean, it's just-
Oh, wait, you, you've kind of morphed a little bit. You're saying if we each ran our own fire department, that would be that way?
No.
No, if you legally-
Why, why would the village need a separate attorney then for-
No, this is-
The fire board, if you actually went-
Did it right.
A fire entity.
A fire entity, you'd-
Okay.
All the things that you'd have to do if you set up your own fire entity as it's, as the auditor's telling us how it should work. They'd have their own workers' comp. They have to have their own property insurance. They're going to have their own unemployment. They're going to have their own EIN. They're going to have to have their own separate council. They're going to have to pay, you know, rents to each of the municipality.
The idea of, of a service agreement with these, I was calling them addendums or whatever, that cover all of these issues, we're all set just by running it through Ross Township with a separate-
That's the way it is now.
If you get rid of like the legal entities, you know, separate legal entity, and you just went with the service agreement, then you can run as-
So, if you take each of the concerns, so if, and so, concern is, hey, the fire board, which now becomes a committee, but it's contractually in the agreement, so the Ross Township Board at a whim can't say, boom, committee's gone. It's, you know, that's taken care of. There's a, the agreement says we are leasing the building, for whatever that is. So, that concern is dealt with, that we can't suddenly exit it. And, and, you know, if I were the village, I'd also want concerns that there's no, you know, sometimes contracts have a, whether it's a thirty, sixty, ninety, one year out, that, that there's not that out clause from our side. You know, maybe there's an out clause on, on their side that they wanted to go negotiate with somebody else like, like Richland. But, there'd still have to be, you know, those are things that I think we can address the concerns. The question is, do you, does the council feel like some of these things would take care of your concerns? So, we could, maybe tonight, we could say, this is, you know, vote on this is the path to go down, so we start building that agreement.
In my view, I think the service agreement would be the more appropriate way to go. It seems to be the less costly overall in, in that it would not necessitate duplication of services. You know, you have the attorney now. Why, why pay a second attorney, or why-
That's only if we went back to the other-
If we went to the interlocal fire agreement, would we need to see a duplication in services?
Right.
And that might be why. It was never, like, we had the agreement set up, but nobody ever did it because of all the additional costs that would be involved in doing it. And that's why it never was done properly.
If you look at, you know, getting your employee ID number, not either here nor there, but putting the checks together. Now, if you're looking at the fire department needing its own checking account, writing their own checks, then you've got the, you've got that added expense. It's going to be minor, but it's still an added expense. The, you know, right now, with the service agreement, you could pay it off of the Ross Township funds, and it's identified that it is a fire department expense, and let it go with that. So, I had to see with the interlocal fire agreement that it would, if we were to go that route, I would see that there would be additional monies that would be spent, maybe not- maybe not necessarily conducive to running the fire department. It's just, it's the nature of the beast that has to be done. But there is minor benefit seen as a result of going that direction. Is that a fair assessment?
So one, one of the concerns for the, the committee, if we go with the service agreement, is how that would be set up? So could we, we would put that in the service agreement too, right? How the committee, okay?
So Rob, with taking the concerns that were shared today into consideration and your knowledge of, you know, working with Jeff on how it needs to be set up from an accounting perspective, compliance, et cetera, how long would it take you to put together a draft service agreement that one, it covers the boilerplate, right? I mean, because, you know, you have others to look at, but specifically address the committee representation, the capital expenditures, the leasing of the building? And what Jeff shared is, what is the, you know, plan in case we can't fund it through a millage after like four years or whatever?
I have base agreements I can work off of and then custom, you know, this is kind of custom to what we're talking about. There's a lot of tweaks to it, you know, to fit this circumstance. So I would say, I mean, realistically, I could have it in a month is a realistic deadline to produce a product that the parties could take a look at and at least start forward on that.
Back together, we can address each point to make sure it meets everybody's comfort level and, and move forward and then.
We'll need time, though, for our lawyer to look at it to.
Sure.
So I think it would help save time if we made sure that these concerns, if we just kind of go back over them and you articulated, I think, most of them. So when you've drafted, you've incorporated those into it. So we, so we've got the, we've got the lease agreement. We've got the, the committee. We've got the, we've got the, we've got to deal with any capital.
And as we look at it, that may be covered by a lease.
Lease agreement.
With lease payments.
We got to, you know, I would want to see as part of the verbiage around the millage, that commitment from both bodies to support the millage actively. But in the event that it's not, you know, I don't know if you call out what, what our alternative assessment is or you.
I think that's a difficult part of it, that I probably would say we wouldn't do. I mean, the parties are going to have to negotiate a different form. You know, if the millage doesn't pass, everybody's in the same boat of how are we going to support this now? I think the expectation would be, it's not going to be a different split of revenue. It's just how we come up with the revenue.
Maybe that's what it says, is if, in the event that we, we agree to come together.
I think even though.
Split of revenue, yeah.
No, we agree to come together to talk about how we would do it.
Yeah.
Which could be the other type of public, public safety assessment.
I think even though Doug has it covered like a blanket, you know, when we talk about the mutual aid, that we just identify that as a commitment, that it will continue to be managed accordingly for all. So, because, I mean, again, that was just brought up as a potential issue as well.
Were there any other concerns that we didn't?
I have one.
Keep.
Yeah, I think. It's.
Want to make sure because I.
Fire department?
Ross Augusta, Ross Augusta Fire. We're not going to drop the Augusta off it. It's not going to suddenly be the Ross Township Fire Department. It's the Ross Augusta Fire Department.
Sorry, I, I thought maybe we had to call something different.
For Andy, I mean.
From my perspective, back to Trustee Harmon's question as to whether or not there are any concerns. As I see it, the room definitely feels to be moving toward the service agreement style. And as a member of the fire board today, that feels like a far more effective way to provide the most positive and most effective service to our community. When I think about the amount of work that the fire board, A, has not only put in, but B, the mountain that we have yet to climb as we have tried to move toward the service agreement, or excuse me, the interlocal agreement that's in place today, swapping to a service agreement feels like a far more effective way to meet the needs of the community and minimizing the legwork that the fire board would need to put in. So to me, that seems like a very clear choice.
Would it be appropriate to make a, a motion that we, we agree to head down the path? We're not agreeing to, to what the, what the agreement would be, but that, that we.
Pursue that.
We pursue that. And, and does that need to be two separate, one for the, one for the Ross Township, one for the village, so?
Before you go any further with that. Would it be possible to, you know, Lynn, you had mentioned something about committee. Would it be possible to look at the potential of the service agreement from a representative committee standpoint, two village, two township? Instead of getting all boards or getting the both boards together? Subcommittee to, I think that would allow things to move together or move fast.
I like your suggestion. And I actually was thinking, when we were talking about the committee, have it be a board advisory committee? Because then we're going, is that what you're talking about?
And to negotiate the agreement.
Oh, to negotiate the agreement, okay.
Sit down and.
So it's like it's equal.
Yeah.
I mean, you got three from township, two from village. I mean, not to say it would happen, but three of the townships say, hey, this is where we're going. Well, we, we feel we got no say-so in this thing. That's why I said more or equal, three villages, three township, and then you got to have independence somewhere to make the tie break.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out which committee we're talking, because I think John was talking about maybe a committee to work on the agreement.
Details.
Yeah, and, and that makes sense, I think.
It does. I thought we were back to working on the committees and making sure the committees had the adverse.
I'm looking at pursuing a service agreement.
Yeah.
Language needed within. If we cut it down to four, you know, Chris said that it makes it a lot easier to get four heads together than the 12, 15, 16, that were, that.
Because what could happen then is I can put together a draft and then we can sit down, you know, and you can have your attorney that's fine. And obviously he'll have time to review it and other things. But we can sit down in two and two and go over the agreement and work through some ideas and. Where we, where we are ending up. And then, you know, it's not going to be waiting every month for a board meeting and then, and then if you miss a meeting, then it's another month and, you know, down the line.
So at this point in time, do we want to have a show of hands on who would like to be represented from the village and who would like to be represented from Ross Township? Raise them tall.
I have two, but I can.
So we got two from the village, Andy? We got three, we got three from the village and we got three from Ross?
So maybe we, if we have three, then we, in the event that somebody's not available, then you, it's almost like the third one's an alternate. So we can keep, keep on going?
Less than a quorum. I mean, as long as we keep it, less than a quorum.
Need to be less than a quorum, otherwise you got to post it as a regular public meeting.
So we could sit down with three and three.
I like it. I, I feel like we're all like-minded. I think this was a great meeting. I think that your summary was spot on. I, I don't need to be a part of the negotiation. I trust our counterparts can bring a fantastic product back to the table.
All right, so.
Who raised their hands? Oh, I said raise them tall.
All right, so for the Ross, I'd like to move that we pursue a service agreement with three trustees working with Attorney Thaul to hammer out the details that would then be brought back to the group.
I'll support.
Mary's not a trustee.
Board members, change out trustee to board members.
We're a board of trustees.
She said trustee's in the motion and that we want the meeting note to say board members.
I supported.
Support the change to board members?
Yes, I do. Trustee Beeks. Okay, we have a motion of support. Do we have further discussion?
The village will have to do one separate.
We'll vote and then you guys can go. We don't need a real call.
No. Is there any further discussion?
Done by the end of the year.
We're going to go for 30. That's why we're, we're dividing and conquering, going for 30 days. So Ross Township Board of Trustees, all in favor. I opposed. None motion carries unanimously. John? Lean into your microphone, sir.
Will do. Okay, is there a motion for Village of Augusta to pursue the service agreement with three members of Ross Township with three members of our council to be identified?
Now, we make a motion first.
Okay.
I make the motion.
Okay.
Talk loud.
Kim will support it, yep. Okay, moved and supported that we do form a subcommittee to pursue the service agreement with Ross Township. And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we have any other motions we need to move forward on or have we covered what we need to do?
I have kind of unrelated, so if we're done with this and, and I think have everybody here. I just, it's a quick request and since, since Doug is here, Martin's not. But as I think those that pay any attention to social media, there's been, you know, a lot that has been out there around the unfortunate drowning that happened on the July 4th. And so I would like to request that we get the, the details, both from the fire department and the police on who arrived when on the scene. Is that, I'm assuming that information is, is available?
What's the intent? Is to, and respond to social media?
No, the intent is so to make sure that we, we know. And so if, if there, in the event there was an issue, then we can look to take corrective action or look to request corrective action.
Like two months ago, or not two months ago, the July meeting, I guess. Wasn't that the logistics of that already addressed?
Microphone.
Well, it didn't, no, it doesn't have the timing of when everybody arrived.
So Lynn, am I understanding you to say because social media is running rampant with falsehoods, we want to do our own internal investigation just to comb through the details to make sure what we have is an appropriate?
Right. And so if, if, if we're sitting here and, and, you know, people are making, if they're making accusations, not so much social media, because I'm a big proponent of not responding, but if, if we won, if they're saying that, you know, somebody didn't arrive and that we are negligent in not being there, that we, we know when our people were there. And in the event that people weren't there in the time that they should have been, do we, do we take the corrective action to put? I mean, the bottom line is, on that 4th of July incident, as horrible it was, that nothing would have, I mean, that, that baby had the best care with the, the parents, the neighbor, the, the police that showed up. Nothing was going to unfortunately change that scenario. But is there an opportunity, is, what, you know, was there something we should have done differently that, that maybe will change the outcome the next time? Or, or not? I mean, I don't, I don't know, because I don't, I, I hear things, but I don't know when everybody was on site at what time.
So Todd, to your, to what you stated was, when we did talk two months ago, I believe Martin said he's, he's not a first responder as far as police goes, right? So is that what you were talking about when we talked about it two months ago?
I just thought that all the logistics of it was covered by the fire department and the police department of timing and that type of stuff. As I recall, maybe, maybe exact times weren't given, but it seemed to me that maybe they were. So if you went back to the, to the YouTube or something, you might find that information. Or if not, then that's a good point.
Grab the mic.
So I know that we did turn in all the times. Life care turned their time in. I would assume, I thought it was at the last meeting. I wasn't here at the last township meeting, so I don't know exactly where, which. So I'm pretty sure that from the time that we got called to the time, the Richland officer, the life care was there at almost the same time as the Richland officer, maybe, because they were right here at the station. So they were only a mile away. But all that, all my guys, the, everybody that was there has been in a timeline. So we did have that, and I don't know exactly, I don't know where it is right now. I know that we did, I did turn that in. Martin had it.
I mean, I wasn't here Tuesday, so I don't, but I have not seen that timeline. So maybe it's just a matter of, of getting, getting that out.
Yeah, so I think, I, I hear the ladies over here talking. It sounds like it's fire board material only that probably should be shared outward because we're not living under a rock. We, we do have individuals that have a narrative that is not accurate. And so I think, I, I appreciate the fact you weren't here. We didn't talk about it Tuesday. And I think in July, the investigation was still open. So we didn't talk about the details in July either.
I know I turned in all my different times and, and different people. So I know that, I know that I had given it to whoever.
Maybe it's just a matter of getting a copy.
I know that I've done that. The only, the only thing I can say is the reason that we're even in this conversation is, is if it had been worded a little bit different from the Richland Police Department, as far as I'm concerned. Because they didn't include anybody else in, other than just him saying that. I mean, they had, because they had the county, county department guy doing CPR. They had the state officer doing CPR. They had the family members were doing CPR. We had life care there doing their stuff. I mean, everybody was there within just of like maybe 25 or 30 seconds of the Richland officer. But unfortunately, that's what our township residents saw is it just got put out that the Richland Police Department was the only one that was there that did, I mean, unfortunately. I mean, if they'd have, if they'd have said, we responded to this call in Ross Township with life care, Ross Augusta Fire Department, Richland Fire Department, MSU One, state, state police, County, County Police. I don't remember if your officers up there or not, Jeff. I mean, but we had, we had 25 to 30 people from different departments. So, but unfortunately, our residents didn't see that. It didn't get put out there that that's, well, that's what happened. All they saw was when it got posted. It would have been nice if they had have just said that we, we assisted. So, I mean, it made it look, it made it look bad for us because, I mean, so, I mean, so now we're going through some other things as far as trying to make sure that we're, who is going to stick around for a holiday weekend? I mean, so we're trying to.
That's not bad. I think that's awesome. I think it's awesome.
But, I mean, but we wouldn't have ever come into that conversation because, I mean, we've always been covered. It's just that now, trying to make it a mandatory coverage when, I mean, we're still a paid-on-call fire department. We're not a, we're not a full-time fire department. So, I mean, that's, that's brought in other things into the equation. But that's, that's kind of where it started is that's how the bad publicity happened is, is because of that. It just didn't, they didn't include anybody else in the, in their post, but.
So maybe it's a simple ask, if you could just share that out with me? Or I don't know who else would like to see it?
She wants your information, your and Val's information. Whatever you guys have.
Can you, can you give it to everybody, Diana?
So we don't want to put anybody on the spot right now. But, but I, I do like what you're saying because what I'm thinking is we probably need to make a, a response. You know, you, you said you corrected the record. There are numerous agencies there.
Right, there was. I mean, there was 10, 10 different departments that were there. I mean, but nobody, nobody knows that. I mean, so.
So I think we need to make sure people understand that.
With, you know, saying, you know, and the investigation is. With, you know, saying, you know, the investigation is done, and as we've, you know, looked at it, the absolute best care that could have happened in this tragedy. But, you know, it sounds like, you know, we found some opportunities to, to be even more prepared going forward, and, and we could talk about that and, and get that out in a way, but just make sure it's looked at. I think that's maybe a lesson that can be shared, not only with us, but with adjacent townships and villages, that, hey, let's just try to advise people, we can't control what they say, but just advise them to really think about what they're putting out on social media, because how it can be portrayed. Because we don't want, I mean, we don't want, whatever group it is, that's doing an awesome job to get a black eye.
Well, I mean, we, we do that on, I mean, when we post for different fire calls.
Yeah.
And I mean, and there's been different times that, since how I've been close to the station and Richland has been slow, there's been different times that we, we beat them to house fires. But we don't say that Ross Township was, Ross Township responded to a Richland fire, fire call and don't. So we just say that we assisted with whoever else might have been, I mean, so we don't just make it. And that, that's where I saw was the, was the big issue, was it just didn't include anybody other than, I mean, and not that he, I mean, the officer did a great job. It's just that it should have been, everybody else should have been, would have never had that problem, because those people would have said, okay, well, I mean, people would have said, okay, well, I mean, because they, well, where was Ross Township? Where was life care? Where was, where was Martin? Where was, whatever? I mean, nobody, I mean, nobody knows that. Nobody knew that. So that's where the, that's where the biggest issue came. So it should have just been handled a little different, and maybe that's something we need to discuss with, with the people that do respond on, on our calls, that they don't just put them out there without, I mean, including everybody else.
You suggested that. Microphone.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. I mean, we should definitely include all parties. And I know Rob or whomever does our social media always, you know, we assisted Charleston, we assisted whatever. So I don't know why that shouldn't be done everywhere.
Right, all right, so, yes, sir. Yes, you may weigh in.
The awesome job that our folks do, both fire and police. We have to be mindful that the news media is out there and they're looking for a story. And with social media, Channel Three News, Channel Eight, Channel Seventeen, you need to be prepared to provide a accurate statement of your preparedness and your response to a call. This is something that we talk about in emergency management as we work through these things. Had a few years of experience in some major calls. We need to partner and have a strategic plan for disseminating information. It shouldn't be just a shoot-from-the-hip type thing, but a prepared statement of what has happened and, you know, the entities that were there. It's hard enough nowadays with, as we talked about, having adequate enough people, and holidays are one of those times. But you had some of the best people on the planet, and I'm gonna say that because I know most of them, and that responded and gave the best care you can. You're not always gonna win. I've been in this long enough that there are going to be losses. Whether it be a car accident, be a boat accident, whether it be a tornado or an oil spill. There's losses. And it's a tragedy, especially a young person. Those are always the hardest. That was one of my first as a person doing emergency response, that we lost a six-year-old. She dove into the river and didn't come back up. Happened to find her in a tire that was left in the river. Not a good situation, but you live with it, you move on. So, and the awesome work that your fire department, the Richland Fire Department, the, the statement that was made shouldn't have been made that way. It should have been a coordinated effort through the chief and through the, you know, command staff. That's the reason for incident command. And that we, as incident commanders, myself, fire chief, make a statement that is appropriate and, and covers what that really happened. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I have one thing that I need to announce. We have been told by county that we are now having an election in November. The Augusta-Galesburg schools have decided to put something on the ballot, and it will only be one precinct. It'll be precinct one, and it will only be the one thing on the ballot for the schools. So we will have to man a precinct on election day and a, a counting board on the election day also.
Yeah, is it early voting?
Um, we're not doing early voting.
And that, we have that option?
We do.
So it's only precinct one and only those that are in the Galesburg-Augusta school?
Yep, only people in the Galesburg-Augusta School District, no one else.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I don't want to close this down. It is seven forty-five PM. I would like to go around the table, and we will start with our guests, the good, the bad, the ugly. If you'd like to share a comment on how you believe tonight went, and pass it to your next village person, and we'll go around the table.
I'll pass. Thank you.
I think it was a good meeting. I think we got a little bit done. I think we understand where we, we stand at. And like I said, I want to see it get done before the end of the year.
That's not fair. Okay. Yeah, I, I think it was a good, good meeting. We understood. But I do have one addendum on this. Jeff mentioned that we did have the roof on the fire barn replaced. The roofer said there were no signs of any water leaks in that building at all. I would dearly love Clerk Stage to come out and say, one, where evidence of that leak was, or, two, retract her statement stating that there were water leaks in that fire barn.
I was told that by the fire chief. So.
Moving on.
I'd just like to say that I feel that we're in a good place, better than we were back in February or even April. I wish that Jeff could have explained to us why this came out, or why it was gonna come out, instead of just emailing it to John and saying, oh, here you go. So I think we really broke down in that communication thing from October to February. So, but I appreciate this. I think this is the better way to do it. And then going to a subcommittee is even better. Thank you.
Ditto, ditto, and ditto. I think it was a great meeting.
Meeting. I think we have a lot of work to do, but I, I trust that we'll come to a conclusion that we all can agree on. Next.
I was glad to see the communication was much better tonight than the first time we got together and started this process a year ago. We got a lot of work to do, but I see that that is possible. Thank you.
It was a good meeting to me. A lot of progress was, was made. Confusion cleared up. I learned a lot. I think others did as well.
I had made a comment in one of the board, last three board meetings, I can't remember which one it was, but I said that the village and Ross Township is going to have to have a relationship for the next hundred years. Can it survive us? And I really feel like tonight, there's a lot of movement in that direction, where we can move forward the next hundred years with a great relationship without having to do a lot of recovery. So I, I was really, really impressed with everybody.
I was very happy with the meeting tonight. And I think now that all of us, because we didn't, even as a township board member, I didn't know all the information that Mr. Root had, and learned some things. So I think we all heard it, we're all here, and I'm, I'm glad that that happened. And everybody took the time to, you know, come this evening. Because that way, he didn't get the message from her, or vice versa. We all heard it with our own ears, and I think that's very positive. And we aren't against the village.
So for those of you that don't know me, I exhaust every opportunity I have to exhaust our advisors. And I'm sure Mr. Root's sitting over here going, she exhausts me. Why didn't we bring him here before? It's because I, I wanted this relationship with the village to work. It, we, we're family, and we weren't getting it together. And so I shanghaied him and got a date from him and coordinated with legal and brought him here. And it's not because I'm trying to pat myself on the back, but I, I just am gonna keep bringing advisors to all of us to benefit from. And that was the reason why I brought him today. And I'm glad, and don't hold it against me, that you're stealing your Thursday night here in Ross Township. I appreciate you. Rob?
I think it was a good meeting. I'm glad everybody's happy with it. I'm glad we got things cleared up, and we're moving forward.
Same here. I also look forward to participating in the committees, you know, as the current treasurer of the fire board. I look forward to more progress and moving forward.
I, I think it's always better to get face-to-face and have conversation and get the issues on the table. I would like to see us, one, if there's an issue, we just get together, or, and/or that maybe once a year, we, we do this and have a joint meeting where, you know, we can, I don't want something to build up and fester, but we can get together and realize that, you know, we all, we all care about the village. And, and the township, because it helps make us both better. So thank you for coming.
Are you done talking?
No. Just keep open minds and communication open. Like, like we said, you know, you're one community. Even, I, I really enjoyed the idea of having an annual meeting with both of you guys to hash out future plans, not just having a subcommittee, but everybody together. I think that'd be very positive. Everybody's input. I'm voice- heard, right? Thanks for coming. And hope to see you soon.
Thank you very much, Madam Supervisor, all of Commissioner. As the village manager, I strive to work as a collaboration with both the township and the village, as well as taking care of the village needs. I obviously represent them, but I also represent you all on the county board. And I'm here as a resource for you, and I, I can't get to your meetings, because you have them the same night that we have a county board meeting, and they seem to think I need to be there for some reason. I don't know why. I guess it's because so I can vote and represent you all. So I am available to you as Ross and as Augusta, as your county commissioner, but also as the village manager, which is a little different, because my responsibility is to make sure that we collaborate and work good with everybody and, and make this thing work. So if you need something, please don't hesitate to give me a call at the village hall. I'm usually there about six, seven days a week, so.
Thank you, sir. So we are now moving into the second citizen comment. This is the one-minute speed round. If anybody would like to address us, you may jump up to the podium. You have one minute.
You want my name?
Nope.
Okay, so. The, the, one of the issues that I have is, I'm not sure why it took so long to realize the, the, that we needed a separate EIN number. I mean, how, I mean, that was, kind of took us by surprise, I think. The other issue that I do have too is, if we are gonna go back to eliminating the fire board, is I really don't want to have to work with all of you. So I think that the.
Gee, thanks.
Well, it's, it's hard enough to work, it's hard enough to work with the five, like, like, seven or eight. I mean, it's, unfortunately, I mean, to try to understand what everybody wants and, and right now, even what, what they're trying, what they've been trying to do with all of us, all the command staff, is we put a lot more work on the four of us to try to come up with things. To create different, the different, more accountability, and, and not that that's bad. I mean, it's, but it's, it's putting a lot of pressure on us. So, and we're working on a five-year plan. We're working on a ten-year plan. We're working on a capital improvement plan. So all, all these things, trying, and then trying to work on trucks and that kind of stuff. It's just, so it's, I mean, it's hard enough to work with, with the five, to, to get everything taken care of. But I, so I think that if you're gonna, if we're gonna go back to the township board runs it, I think that you need to set up, like, I don't know how many, what we need, three people? I don't know. Do we need five people? What do you need? I guess you have to have a quorum probably, so what, five?
Well, that's where the committees come in. So you're not absolved from doing your homework. You're still gonna have to produce for the committees.
I'm just not saying that, but I just don't want to have to deal with everybody.
Don't. It's, we're not going back to the way it was in eighty-three or eighty-seven. You still are gonna go give a update, just like you do today, to, to the council meeting and to the board meeting. We're gonna have the committee, all the details are gonna work out, but it, it, yeah, it's really a formality. It's gonna be very much the same or easier.
For the most part, for the last almost forty years now, it's run pretty damn smooth. So, I mean, we, I mean, so it's kind of.
We're not back in eighty-three.
But since eighty-seven, since we switched.
Maybe eighty-three was over forty years ago.
Almost forty years, almost forty years, so.
Remember, this is public comment.
There's been pretty, pretty, there's been some issues, I mean, different things, but.
You'll be fine. You'll be good.
But, at any rate, I just.
Don't worry, Chief. We've got their three, our three, they're gonna figure it all out. You're gonna be just fine. You're gonna be just fine. Don't you worry.
All right. Motion.
Right. So that was over one minute. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to talk to the council and the Ross Township board? There being no further comments. We have, wow, we're done. See ya. All in favor? Aye. One, two, three, not it. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Christina Thompson, you second, you second that?
I did.
She did.
Oh, John did?
I think we had four people second that. Everybody wanted out of their chairs.
It's, it'll be real quick.